Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Kent City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, April 19th. We got four items on our agenda for tonight. We'll start with the first one, which is the Sound Transit Downtown Center Garage. Matt Gilbert?
Hello again, everyone. I think I last did an update on this back in December, and a few things have changed. I just have a short, but I think substantial update for you tonight. I always have to recap this just for context, but I've got an image here of the location of the garage that was agreed to back in 2020. Specifically, this was a 534-stall garage that was approved as part of the ST2 plan in November of 2008. So it's been a long time coming for us, and we've really been working diligently with Sound Transit since about 2019 or so. They've been doing some community work before that, but you know, they're getting around to this garage, as well as the garage in Auburn, one in Sumner, and there's one in Puyallup that's just a few months from completion. So these have kind of been down on the priority list for ST2. The cost of this entire project is estimated to be around $114 million, so it will be a substantial investment in our downtown. As I said, the city and Sound Transit did agree to this location. I want to cover, let's see, can I get the next slide, please, Kim? Thank you. So here's a screenshot from Sound Transit's website. You see the address there, and I would encourage everyone to visit that site. What this is, is a visual, they're kind of trying to get visual feedback from the community on what this garage should look like. They haven't designed it yet. They know where it's going. They know some of the basics of the site design, but as far as the garage itself and the artwork and things like that, those aren't determined. They're looking for feedback on those things, so I would encourage you to take a look. That is open through, I think, the 26th of April. They've had this site up here for a few weeks, and I think it's really good of them to be seeking that community feedback. So please go take a look. So the big update I have for you today, and you can go to the next slide, please, Kim, is related to the approval process. Now, when we started working together back in 2020, our first real, our main order of business was to negotiate a development agreement. Now, the development agreement is a process that's allowed in the city code for kind of unusual projects that, you know, like I think, I think Shower Center was built under a development agreement. Things that aren't, like don't normally fit into the code neatly are able to go through this alternative process where everything's kind of negotiated upfront, then the council approves the agreement, and then sometimes you can avoid some of the other permitting requirements because it's handled through that, the DA, the development agreement. So Sound Transit had indicated their desire to use a development agreement for this project, which is, you know, that's within their rights, it's legitimate. So we were negotiating that through the pandemic, through, you know, since 2020. Our big issue with, you know, with staff, staff, and you know, the mayor was somewhat involved in that as well. But our big issue with Sound Transit from day one was that we wanted them to affirm that they would build a 534-stall parking garage. They would specify that within the development agreement that would come forward to council. They were always, however, very resistant to that number. They wanted to say things like that they will build a garage that is up to 534 stalls. So it was very, there was a lot of squish there that we were insisting be nailed down so that the council knew what they were approving. And as we worked, we kind of tabled that issue for a while and worked through some other things, but then came back to that. I, you know, I was hoping that they would be willing to make that commitment. However, as they went through their budgeting exercise, you know, in their realignment that took place during COVID, you know, there were, obviously, there were some financial issues there. They were trying to say, you know, cut costs, and I think what became evident is that their strategy is to build fewer than 534 stalls. So we told them that we would not be bringing forward a development agreement that authorized less than 534 stalls. So what Sound Transit has done is stepped away and said that they don't want to go through the development agreement process any longer, which is somewhat frustrating because we've been working at it for so long. But again, that's their right. They can go through a traditional permitting process, or they can go through the development agreement process. They've opted for the traditional permitting process, which will mean that they would file a conditional use permit like any other, you know, any other construction project that would involve negotiating with staff, identifying special impacts that that project might have, and identifying mitigation for those impacts. And they would go to a public hearing before the city's hearing examiner, who would, you know, approve or approve with conditions or deny the application. So that, what that means is that they will make a proposal to us through that process. Now, the number of stalls that they choose to propose is something that we don't have any control of. However, we will continue to fight for the 534-stall number, and that's a commitment that I know that the mayor is, or that's something the mayor's committed to, and that's something that, you know, we're working at the staff level to advance. So, you know, part of that permitting process, you know, I think most of the impacts would be covered by city regulations and that conditional use, but again, that number on, that number of stall issue will continue to be, you know, a part of what we're pushing for.
Hey, Matt, one quick question. So when they go to this traditional permitting process, so, I mean, could they go to the examining committees and be willing to do 500? I mean, they can dictate what that number could be, and we have no say so?
They could propose whatever they want.
And do we have any input into that?
We do, but it's probably through, it's through the channels that we have. We can call Sound Transit, we can lobby Sound Transit, we can lobby the board, we can, I think, working through our connections with the board is something that will be necessary if we're to keep that number up. Now, there's still some, there's a lot of decisions to be made that will affect that number. So what will happen next is that they will go out and hire a design-build contractor who will design the garage and work through the permitting process. Now, one of the things that Sound Transit staff has told us that their strategy is to incentivize that designer to provide the maximum number of stalls up to 534. So what they would do is say, please design us a garage, and they would put some minimum number of stalls on it. And they say, we want the maximum number of stalls, so you tell us how you're going to provide all those stalls within the budget. And then that designer would have the opportunity to find savings through efficient design of the site and of the garage itself to try to get up to that number. So what we're watching for is that, you know, they, we want them to build a building that meets our downtown standards, that provides all the bus layover space that they've promised, that we get, that we have our streets built from concrete where there will be more buses so that they're, they can be maintained, or they won't fall apart as fast under the bus traffic, things like that. So we need to make sure that there's a balance between their cost savings and what they're providing. So there is a dynamic there where they say they will prioritize the stall count, but kind of the unspoken part of that is that they're going to try to trim costs elsewhere. So that's something that we have to be cognizant of as we review their designs.
I guess the question really get at, so do we as a city, can we go and counter or make a statement to the examining committee, or that's strictly with Sound Transit only?
That, I think, will be with Sound Transit, because, you know, they can make a, they can make a development proposal for whatever, you know, it's their project, so they're going to, they're going to set those parameters of what they're proposing. And so I think it's going to be up to us to, you know, pressure Sound Transit to maximize that number.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, that's kind of the meat of what I wanted to share. That's a big change. It, you know, we had a chance to talk about a lot of issues and work through them, so hopefully, you know, they know where we stand. I don't think it was wasted time, but it was kind of disappointing that they couldn't commit to that stall count that they had advertised back when Sound Transit 2 was approved by the voters back in 2008. So what do we expect going forward now? They're basically on the same schedule. In May, they will put out a request for qualifications to potential design-build contractors that might be interested. There will be a submittal process, and by October, they plan on selecting that design-build contractor. They'll go through some negotiations and design work with that contractor, and by March of 2023, they expect to issue what they call the Notice to Proceed, which says, contractor, go forth, get your permits, do whatever work, design work, and then start construction. So they're planning on project completion by 2025. So I think they saw this DA obstacle as something that could really affect their schedule, so they decided to walk away from it. Now, I will share also that the city of Auburn will be under the same contract, and they're also operating without a development agreement. They're relying on their local permitting process and development codes to handle the impacts, which frankly, I'm comfortable with that, but for this question of the number of stalls. So I think we can definitely manage to review this and make sure it's a good project for the city. It's just that scale of the project question is kind of outside of that realm. It's something that's going to need, we're going to need to bring some pressure on Sound Transit if we want to keep that up where they said it would be at 534.
Well, I'm gonna put the mayor on the spot. I mean, so I know you work a lot with the board and probably know, what are your thoughts, gut feeling, on us getting what we want?
So I, in my monthly call with Peter Rogoff and now his new, the new interim executive at Sound Transit, this is an absolutely monthly conversation. I continue to hold them to the commitment that they made to the city, which was 534 stalls. The counter to that is that they do believe that giving flexibility to the design-build contractor will, that that's an incentive point. What I have not been able to establish is, of all of the things that are important in the selection process, is the stall count up there at the top, or is it other things? I've asked for an explanation, and I just actually pulled up an email, somebody, email from, from Sound Transit talks about the environmentally cleared project scope includes a parking garage of up to 400, or 534 stalls, and that's the design with the bus layover facility. Because they're, it's impacting existing parking at the station, it would be a net new total of 414 stalls, and then they want flexibility of 15% on that 414. So I'm struggling a little bit with this. I am, I will tell you what their commitment has been, is that they believe this process will net us somewhere close to what we're expecting, but I don't have anything that proves that. My struggle becomes, if you are a contractor and you're trying to come in at the lowest point, adding to something from the base doesn't make a lot of sense. I will tell you that Peter's been pretty consistent in his comments that he thinks it will, so taking that at face value, but 100% will continue in those monthly meetings to advocate for the stalls that I think our residents and our users of our station were promised many, many years ago. And to Matt's point, this is a project that was passed in 2008.
Is Auburn under the same type?
Auburn is a same exact concept, so they're putting the same requirements out, and they're really hoping to get the same design-build contractor for both of these projects.
Okay, so we all facing the same?
We're all facing the same thing. We'll continue to coordinate with Auburn on this as well.
Thank you. Councilmember, any questions, thoughts? Good? Okay. Xander, you okay? Good. I'm not watching Kurt anymore, so we can...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, thank you, I forgot to put that on. So would there be, between Kent and Auburn, would there be some economies of scale if they're that similar?
That, that's the goal in bundling the two projects, is that they get somebody on board.
Absolutely, because you may only need one design.
And that, Matt, might be more able to speak to that. I don't know any of the details of the Auburn garage.
Yeah, thank you. I think that there might be some economy of scale. I've asked that very same question of their construction folks, and the fact that they're under one contract with one design builder will save some money. However, the sites for the, the site for the Auburn garage is almost perfectly square, so the garage, and Kent's is more of a, you know, stretched-out rectangle, so the garages won't be the same, but they'll be designed by the same architects and engineers and project, you know, and shepherded through by the same project managers. So you're not going to, they don't foresee really getting the construction savings just because they're different buildings. They're not going to be kind of a stamped-out sort of replica, although that was, that was a concept that they had explored early on. They thought they could do it, but just the layout doesn't allow for it.
Okay, okay. We're gonna move on to the next one. Thanks, Matt, and I hope you start feeling better.
All right, appreciate that.
Okay, the Sound Transit Federal Way Link Extension update, and we have Derek.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, those in the audience. Pleased to be here tonight. I'm going to present to you the Federal Way Link Extension update for the first quarter. Just to introduce myself, Derek Hawkes, I'm an engineering supervisor with the Public Works Design Group. I brought with me Mark Madfi, my counterpart. We both have taken over the project as the city liaisons for the city for this project from Kelly, so as Kelly moved up to his new role, Mark and I are backfilling in. Just so you know, my area is the Kent Des Moines Road, south through KDM Station and Garage, all the way to 259th, and then Mark picks up at the south side of 259th and continues on down through Star Lake, Star Lake Garage, and over 272nd to Federal Way. So those are kind of the way we have those segmented. And Mark's here too, and Kelly to answer any questions you guys might have. Just for the viewing public, just a quick summary of the project. It's about 7.8 miles, starts up at Angle Lake Station, three stations, Kent Des Moines Station, Star Lake Station, and ends in Federal Way Transit Center down in downtown Federal Way. Estimated operational revenue service is 2024, although we expect the construction to pretty much be complete in 2023, and then a year of testing basically to carry on to 2024. Yeah, keep going on. Want to share this slide, that we did some project drone videos, actually, Sound Transit did some in early January, and they're doing one in April that flies the whole project, so it's really, really cool video. I had the links there, but kind of thought I would just share these with council after the April drone footage is compiled, so they've already flown the project, they just haven't put it all together. So be on the lookout in the next week or so for an email with some of those YouTube links. It really puts things in perspective when you get to see it from the air. Next slide. Sound Transit came up with a new station naming policy. Some of you may have heard of this at yesterday's Public Works Committee meeting. I just wanted to highlight that. We had some concern about this as staff, the station that's always been called Kent Des Moines Station and Garage, there's four names being considered in that policy, which is Midway, Highline, Highline College, and Kent Des Moines. Some of the names have a slash or a hyphen or don't have it all, but Kent Des Moines is kind of what we've been operating under, the assumption of the project. That name's been used throughout the project. It's easy to remember, it conforms with the policy that Sound Transit just came up with, and it represents the location and the community that it's in. We were, again, a little surprised at this stage of the project that other names are being considered, but I'll talk about that in a second. The other station in the city of Kent is 272nd Street Station. A Star Lake is the only name being considered, so I expect that that will probably get named Star Lake. Some of the next steps is the, the Sound Transit will send a resolution if authorized by council. Additional public comment process, we're in that right now. There was a deadline today, actually, to submit the suggestions for names. Sound Transit's Expansion Committee had a meeting set up for May 12th to go over the names for these three stations. Got an email today, though, that that is being changed to June 9th, so that got pushed back a little bit. And then it would go before the full board on May 26th was originally, and now it's June 23rd. So we have a little bit of time, but wanted to throw this out here. The public can submit their preference, the station names. There's the email, fwl@soundtransit.org. There's a voicemail, there's a place to mail that into. Just encourage everybody to vote, and I think we've been clear what our preferred name is to Sound Transit, and we'll see where that goes through the process. Moving on to the design-build process, so I know Kelly's presented this slide every quarter, well, most quarters probably. Part of the design-build process, there's a lot of permits that are ongoing. Fortunately, we got a lot of the packages complete, so now it's a lot of permit revisions for areas maybe that weren't included in the design, or, you know, lots of changes that are common through a design-build process. To date, or actually as of the end of March, we had 710 permits applications for the whole project, so that's a big number. 131 permit revisions approved by city of Kent, and there's 79 currently in the design process to be submitted. This is an ongoing process, this will continue throughout the project, and hopefully over time, though, it will get less and less, but Mark and I review those, you know, multiples usually a week, so, yeah, ongoing. Now's the exciting part, getting into some construction. First section here, I just want to talk about Kent Des Moines Station Garage and Guideway. This is called Structure B, and this is a rendering of the station looking kind of in the southwest direction. So this is 30th Avenue, and then we have 236 is where that bus is going under the guideway. So just imagine, I think you've seen this rendering before, but this is what the station's proposed to look like once complete. Wanted to give council a general update of what's kind of happened over the last quarter. So utility work, water, sewer, and drainage is ongoing, that will continue for some time. KDM Road girders installed, that's a, you'll see some slides here of what that looked like the night they did the installs over KDM Road. Guideway connection, so we're, we have a continuous guideway now from Angle Lake Station all the way through to Midway, so, you know, the girders are set for that whole segment, so that's actually really encouraging as well. Garage, concrete pours, they're doing the fourth deck, we'll talk about that a little bit more since the concrete strike is maybe not affecting us as much anymore. And KDM Station decking and platform work has been substantially, you know, progressed in KDM Station foundations. And pleased to report too, this was really big to Sound Transit, but rail delivery, if you, there's some rail off the shoulder of I-5 going south right before you get to KDM Road. You'll see a couple of huge piles of rail, and they were, Sound Transit was really excited to have that showing up on site. Moving on to, this is what we call the Structure B, so that guideway, elevated guideway runs from KDM Road, this is the city of Des Moines. I think when Kelly presented in December, it was intact all the way to about this location here. All of the area south was completed, but it runs to Midway landfill. But we were excited, again, to get that KDM Road crossing and all that guideway up for this whole structure, so, yeah, the blue dash line represents what's already been installed, which is pretty much the whole structure now. I want to give a shout out to our communications team, coordinated through Alex, but they did some drone videos, drone footage, the end of last week. I think this really speaks volumes of kind of what's going on out there. You know, as you're driving down 30th Avenue, we're actually looking, I'm sorry, looking kind of south, maybe southeast a little bit, but on the ground, it's really hard to kind of see the aerial view of what's going on, but, you know, we have the garage over here, the station, the platform is kind of taking effect, we're starting to see that. Again, the elevated guideway is, I'm sorry, is installed all the way over to Midway, so that's encouraging. Just so everybody knows, 234th Street is going to be right here, and 236th Street's in this area. So, yeah, you see a lot's going on, and this changes, you know, next quarter, it'll probably look quite a bit different, too. So I want to kind of go through a few slides for the Structure B, starting on the north end. This is looking north, this is into Des Moines, that's the abutment. This was what was in last presentation last quarter, and you can see now that that gird and guideway is installed over KDM Road, and that connection has been made. So, yeah, pretty exciting to see that. So December 21st, or December 21 versus April 2022. Kelly and I were out there that night with our permitting group, too, and, yeah, really exciting to be out there. This is a view kind of looking, looking south. You can see, you know, the girders are installed, the garage is in the background, yeah, just kind of a cool event. I think some of these girders were 130 feet long, so pretty, pretty long girder, and they were putting, you know, multiple of them in at the same time. Took a, took a couple nights. Here's some more images, so this is, the image on the left is KDM Road looking east, and you can see them, you know, putting that first girder into place. And then on the bottom right is the, yeah, the truck, the delivery truck with the gird or the next one in. Move on to the next slide. I'm sorry, this is a duplicate slide, so I'll move on from here, but wanted to highlight KDM Road. There's a number of closures, partial or full closures coming up over the next, next week, actually, on the 25th, 26th, 27th, and 28th is backup. They're doing a lot of extra work, utility work, removing false work, and just preparing, yeah, trying to finish up some of the things on KDM Road, but this will not be the last KDM closure either. And we'll post this on our Drive, Drive Kent Alert system so people know what's going I want to share this structure, this is looking kind of northwest, this is the actual platform. And again, this was, the one on the left was back in December, and then in April to the right, you can kind of see some of the changes of what's, how that's looking out there. So, yeah, a lot of progress being made. Move on to the next slide, this is KDM Station looking northeast. So this is, yeah, mostly the station is taking up this picture, but you can see in the platform, you know, over time, though, you'll see kind of a lot of, from the ground, it's just columns, but you'll see a lot of that filling in as we go forward. And then the garage, you can see, you know, close up, we'll talk about this in a little bit, but they're doing some concrete pours, finishing up the fourth floor of the garage. So, yeah, just awesome to see this video from the air. This is Structure, the kind of southern part of Structure B, behind Lowe's, is looking south. Yeah, they've made good progress in that area, so. Next slide, we're kind of focused on Kent Des Moines Garage at this point, so there's a rendering again of what the garage is supposed to look like when it's complete. A couple drone images there, the one on the left is kind of looking in general southeast, maybe a little bit more east, but that's April 2021 on the left, and April 2022 on the bottom right. So you can see the massive change there in a course of a year worth of construction, so, yeah, again, making, making great progress. Next slide, this is a shot looking pretty much east from 30th Avenue, and again, just kind of represents the more massive scale that aerial photograph doesn't show. I will add to it that actually... I will add to it that actually on the 22nd of April and 29th of April, you know, due to the concrete strike, there was, a lot of work was being halted or postponed. They're trying to catch up, so we're working with Sound Transit to, and Kewitt, to go ahead and do some concrete pours early in the morning on those two nights, or two mornings, to try to get kind of caught up and get back on schedule, so definitely lost, lost some time there. I also wanted to highlight on this picture, too, the elevators and stairways are going in this area, so that's something that is going to be forthcoming here in the next quarter, so. Moving on to Star Lake Station and Garage, there's a couple of good renderings there of what the platform would look like on the bottom right, and then the, yeah, the overall garage on the, on the, the left in the background. I want to kind of give a couple updates of what was completed this past quarter. So utility work is ongoing, but a lot of it has been, been completed as well. Utility relocations are nearing completion. These are PSE, electric, you know, other gas and electric, other utilities. Star Lake Garage, the first floor concrete's been poured, and they're working on ramps going up to the second floor. And Star Lake Station foundation's completed and wall's ongoing. And then, actually, last night, they set the Structure Z, which is the girders over 272nd, so that's, again, another exciting point to see when, you know, when those large street crossings take effect, and, you know, obviously, traffic was closed on that road during that time, so. Some other photos here, the one on the left is, I think that was back the last time, back in December 2021, that's on the 272nd off ramp, I believe. Kelly took that picture. And then the one on the right is from 26th Avenue. I'm sorry, these are both, these are both current pictures. Some other pictures from Friday. Star Lake Station on the left, you can kind of see, yeah, a lot of, a lot of work happening there, those, yeah, the platforms are starting to take effect, and on the right, that's that first, first floor and ramp up to the second floor, the concrete pours. And then, yeah, I think this picture on the bottom shows a lot of what's kind of going on out there. So, yeah, a lot of work at Star Lake Garage, and we'll see over the next quarter, that's going to kind of catch up to where KDM Garage is. This is Structure Z, this, again, this crossing over 272nd. These photos were taken this morning, and, yeah, you can see, yeah, the girders are essentially all over, over 272nd, so that's, again, an exciting period to get through, so. Wanted to highlight, too, 272nd, there's going to be some ongoing length closures there as well, storm and gas and another utility work that's happening, so just kind of be on the lookout for those closures on 272nd. And this is aerial view, this is provided by Sound Transit, so again, they fly every quarter, they fly the whole project, and then these are some still images that they took, but this is looking more north, and, again, you can see the substantial amount of work, the work area, the trucks, the vehicles, the cranes, yeah, it's definitely a popular site there. This image was back in December 2021, and, again, a lot's happened since then. You know, Star Lake Station, just to highlight, is located right next to I-5, and then the elevated guideway goes, this is Structure Z that we just talked about over 272nd, and it continues then on to Federal Way. And you can see the green is the proposed Star Lake Garage, and then, of course, there's a storm pond. This is 26th Avenue, which turns into 28th. And again, just take a mental note there, 2021 of December, and then this is what it looks like as of April, so you can just see, yeah, again, a lot, a lot has happened there, both in the station, the station platform, or the foundation for the platform, and then also the garage and getting those foundations and ramps for it, so. And, yeah, here's just another, another picture from more, more straight down, but this, again, was April 2022. Wanted to kind of talk about going forward, what's coming up on the project, so Segment 1, again, which is kind of more my area, KDM Station and Garage. Again, permit revisions are always forthcoming, so we continue that to be, that'll be pretty strong in the project. KDM Station, we're looking at foundations and elevator pits, those going in, setting steel for the elevators, again, on that, on that 30th Avenue side of the garage, procuring steel for the station platform. KDM Garage is the final, pour final deck slab and ramp slabs of garage, again, that was delayed due to a concrete strike, installing steel staircases and elevators, and then mechanical at will plumbing and fire finishes. And then, again, there's still some utility work, water sewer and drainage happening kind of throughout the project. Segment 2, which is, again, Mark's area, focused on Star Lake Station Garage, again, permit revisions are always out there. Star Lake Garage slab on grade, garage pours completed, they're going to complete those, pour elevated decks and ramps, and then at the station, the construct walls, delivery of signal house, prefabricated structure, utility work, complete the relocations of other utilities, and then continuing, continuing water sewer and drainage. Then begin Pond A, which is a city-owned pond off of 26th Avenue, and then the, begin the abutment walls for the guideway between the station and 272nd. And the last slide here is, just want to talk about revenue service, so, again, the project is supposed to be mostly constructed by the end of '23, which means it should, the end of '23, which means it should go into service in 2024. We've heard some words that maybe it's going to be pushed back into 2025. Mayor, maybe you know a little bit more about that? But, yeah, again, some of it's making up for the concrete strike. Again, it's a, it's a big project. I think things are going well, but, you know, that's just an indication that we've heard. Anything, Mayor?
Yeah, again, in my last conversation, given the length of the concrete strike, what, what Peter was telling me was, not only do we have to take that six months, or however long it feels like, six years, the concrete strike's been happening, take that into effect, but then also the scheduling and the re-mobilizing of all of the other contractors and things that have been delayed. So I think that the words might have been, wouldn't be surprised to see it happen in 2025, but can't commit to any sort of hard date, so I think we should all be prepared to see it in 2025.
And to that point, I will highlight, too, that, again, you know, Kelly, Mark, myself, Chad are working really hard to work with Sound Transit to kind of help speed that up, and, you know, we're very willing to compromise to help, you know, help get that construction in place like we are on the garage here in the next, next couple weeks, so. At this point, this was, this was our presentation, so, again, Mark, Kelly and I are here. If there's any questions, be happy to entertain those questions.
Thanks, Derek. Great presentation, very thorough, really appreciate that. Kelly, you filled your shoes real well, so, so thank you.
Took two of us, buddy.
Okay. Any question, council member? I don't see any lit up here. Nope. I think we're good. Good job. Keep it up, and we look forward to the next update, but things looking pretty good, so.
We'll have some good pictures for you next time, too, so.
Thanks, Derek. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, we can move on to item number three, the quiet zone. Rob Brown.
Good evening, Council President, Council Members, Madam Mayor. Tonight, I would like to give you an update on the quiet zone. No, first, Rob Brown, Public Works, I am the manager of Transportation Engineering. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, getting excited about this. Four topics I'd like to talk about tonight, our review of the quiet zone establishment process. It's been a while since we've talked about this. That might be a nice time just to take a couple minutes and just go through the process and how we actually go through the different steps we need to go through to establish a quiet zone. And then we'll do updates on each of the two railroads, and we'll finish it off with a 2022 legislative update and how that relates to the quiet zone. So first off, we'll, just a quick overview of the quiet zone establishment process. I'll go quickly through this, if you've heard me talk about this before, but, again, I think it's, it is important, and I will speak to the rest of the topics. The quiet zones are established through the federal train horn rule, through the federal railroad administration. This is established, it is in a federal law, it's in a CFR. And the basic principle behind establishing a quiet zone is risk reduction. There are specific risks associated at the crossings with the trains sounding their, their train horns, and to establish a quiet zone, we need to make changes to those crossings to reduce that risk level to at or below the current risk level with the train horns, and so we have to make crossing improvements to lower those risks so they are equal to what we have now with the train horns. There are a couple of different methods for establishing train horns, oh, sorry, establishing a quiet zone. The FRA has approved 13 different crossing modification treatments with defined risk reductions, and so if you have a, if you can implement those, they're called supplemental safety measures, SSMs, and you'll hear that again. Those are defined or approved, easier way to do things. Another way to do it is if you can't meet the supplemental safety measures, but you can implement part of those, you get what's basically a partial credit. Those are called alternative safety measures or ASMs, and we'll talk about those in a minute again. The partial credit or ASM method of establishing a quiet zone does require an application and approval by the federal railroad administration, so they have to basically check our math to make sure that our partial credit calculations meet the criteria and they agree with those before they'll let us establish a quiet zone. So for both our quiet zones, I believe we mentioned this in the August update, we've changed the direction we're going for establishing quiet zones, and I'll mention this a little bit more in the, in the next slide. So both of those are going to go through that quiet, or that partial credit method or the ASM method of establishing a quiet zone, so we do need to make those applications to the FRA. Once we go through that, the FRA approval process, the federal government, then we have to work with the roads and come up with a specific crossing modifications, and Washington has a specific step where the Washington State Utilities and Transportation Commission has to approve all of the crossing modifications. So after we get the federal approval, then we go to the state regulatory agency for railroad crossings, and they approve those, those modifications. From there, we move on to the design and construction process, and then there's a notification requirement to establish a quiet zone with a specific time period, and the quiet zone's established, and then there's also the ongoing maintenance aspect of the quiet zones. So I just wanted to show you this quick graphic. I don't expect you to follow the whole thing, so I just, this came out of a brochure from the federal railroad administration. This is the flow chart for establishing a quiet zone. So you've got some of the, up at the upper corner here, this is the basic things that everybody has to go through, and you've got some different alternatives if you had some pre-existing quiet zones before the federal came out. For us, it basically starts down here, where we go through the alternative safety measures, and then we go up here to the top and follow this down. So, again, just a quick, quick overview of the different processes. So where we are now with our quiet zones with both UP and BN is we are here. We've done our risk calculations, we've, we've gone through all the processes, we are now ready to make our applications to the federal railroad administration. You'll notice two steps down after the FRA approval, you've got the UTC approval, again, this is specific to Washington, not part of the federal process, each state is different. That's followed by construction and then the notification process, so. As I mentioned in, in August, we have gone for a change in our approach. We'd initially planned to do the, the mountable curbs of the pylons, you can see at the, the lower picture. That's actually at the south end of the Kent Transit Center, that's, sorry, Smith Street, and we've changed our approach to doing non-mountable curbs, and those are the pictures, the picture at the top, that's actually a picture from the federal railroad administration. By doing this, one, the construction costs are about the same, that mountable curb is fairly expensive, the maintenance costs are far lower, those pylons are a lot more expensive than I think a lot of us think they are. And the other thing is, is it reduces our risk of losing the quiet zone to, to, to losing some of those pylons. The FRA standard is if we lose two pylons, like you see in the lower picture there, that is grounds for the railroad to start sounding their horns again, because that doesn't meet the criteria for the, the safety reduction measure. So by changing our methodology and going to the curb at the top, it's concrete curb, lot less maintenance, every couple of years, we put some reflectors on top of it and paint the ends of it, and that's the maintenance required. There should not be a case short of some kind of a catastrophe where we, where that would not meet the requirements for a quiet zone, so a lot more certainty by going to that direction. But what that does do is, that requires us to go back to, I'm sorry, move to the, what that does require us, though, is, again, we have to go back to the federal railroad administration and change our approach with our quiet zones. So I'll go to the specific UP railroad recent work. I mentioned in the August update that we had a new diagnostic in, in June. This is a requirement by the federal railroad administration that we had to go back out with the railroad utilities and transportation commission, Washington State Department of Transportation, and go through and look at all of those crossings and determine what the, this whole team of, of these different groups, different entities thought was the best crossing modifications. We did do that, the diagnostic notes were finalized. And once those were finalized, we issued a new notice of intent to establish a quiet zone, and I'm happy to report that the comment period for that recently ended, and we did not receive any unexpected or substantial comments. So based on our diagnostic, we have a path forward to work on that. One of the things that came out of the diagnostic was we need to relocate the gates at Willis Street. They're actually set back behind the shoulders, behind guardrail, and they're about 12 to 15 feet from the actual travel lines, which is not the current UP standard and not the current practice for railroads. And so the diagnostic team, again, of all those different agencies, decided that it would be a good improvement if we relocated those gates. And so since that diagnostic and since the last update, we're now under contract with Union Pacific to design those, that gate relocation, so they're doing that work for us. Just a quick note on the picture on the, the right there, that is a picture of Willis Street, and you can see where those gates, where these gates are located here, here's the guardrail, here's the shoulder, and there's where the travel line is. So what that'll look like is, the shoulder will get narrower, the guardrail will move closer to the roadway, and those gates will get shorter, so. So next steps for, for Union Pacific. So we will, we need to complete a new quiet zone application to the FRA. This is a completely new application. That is underway, so it's a, it's a very large document. I think the one we submitted for BNSF a year before last was 105 pages. So this covers all of our risk calculations, all the things that we, we are proposing to do to the crossings, crossing inventories, there's, it's a bunch of work that goes into that. And we'll also be working with the Washington State Department of Transportation, as you know, Willis Street is also State Route 516, and the state is, has approval authority for what the roadway looks like, the signs, markings and things like that, so we'll be working with them once the UP finishes the gate redesign, because we're going to need some approvals for them to move that guardrail and narrow the shoulders. We have been and will continue to work with the Union Pacific on the crossing modifications and what those specific modifications, the specific details, like pedestrian accommodations, signing and things like that, what those will look like. And then finally, we will start working with the Utilities and Transportation Commission for those crossing modifications. As I may have mentioned before, once you go to the Utilities and Transportation Commission, there's basically two methods you can go through to get those crossing modifications approved. If the railroads sign a waiver, it's an administrative hearing, it's a two to three month process. If we can't come to an agreement with the railroad, it goes to an administrative hearing, and that process is 12 to 15 months. And so that was one of the reasons that we got the railroad under contract to do engineering and work with us, is because not only do we want to be good partners in the process, but we also want to get them to, the city and the railroad to come to an agreement on those crossing modifications to avoid that administrative hearing. And the schedule, I know this is, it's getting pretty long and hard to read, but it is, there are, there are quite a few steps, so this is our best guess of the schedule, as we've learned over the last couple of years, trying to gauge how long it will take the railroad to review and respond to somebody, to something, or even get the FRA to review a document and comment on it. This is our, our best assumption for a schedule at this point. So we start at the top with the FRA review of the quiet zone application, that process, what we've been told now is taking between nine and 12 months. Oh, I should also point out that, as we've done in the past, the green lines are the best case scenario, that's probably the minimum amount of time. The orange, orangish color is more of a realistic, longer-term schedule, so we're hoping that the actual timeframe is somewhere in there, in the middle of that. So, again, top line, FRA reviews our, our application, that's about a 12 to nine month period. We're showing the crossing modifications with the road as a continuing and ongoing effort, because we've, we're going to continue to work through them right up until we go to the, and actually through the applications for the Utilities and Transportation Commission to approve crossing modifications. And here we've also got the modifications, the work with Washnott to review those plans for Willis Street. Those need to be reviewed before we can move on to the crossing modification petitions at the UTC, which is the next line below. Again, as I mentioned, if... at the UTC, which is the next line below. Again, as I mentioned, if the railroad signs the waiver, the state's already indicated they'll sign the waiver for their part of it, so that's good news. If the railroad signs the waiver, then it's about a two-to-three month administrative hearing. If they don't, that's, again, up to 15 months and an administrative hearing. Following that with about seven months to develop construction documents. I've put a seven- to 12-month bracket because seven months, that's about how long it'll take us to develop those and work with the railroad, but depending on how long it takes the railroad to respond and give us the permits we need. We think that could take between seven and 12 months. Construction contracts, that's about a seven-month period. And then I mentioned earlier, there's a notification process. We've agreed, the railroad requested 60 days, and we've agreed to that. That allows them 60 days to get their notification out to their engineers, make their changes to their railroad, and get all those things ready to implement the quiet zone. At the end of that 60-day period, we uncover some signs, and the quiet zone is established. Quick update on the, on BNSF. Recent work with the BNSF, we've done a lot of work with the Federal Railroad Administration. As you may recall, we, we had applied to the FRA for, for a quiet zone a little while ago, and we were successful in that. They approved our application. But as I mentioned, we changed our plan from using those, those curbs with pylons to a, a non, a, sorry, a concrete traffic island. Again, similar construction costs, much less likely for us to have the quiet zone revoked due to maintenance, due to missing pylons. So we've been working with the FRA to determine the proper documentation for that change. This is one of those challenges we face when we're working with a regulatory agency. Our counterpart, the person we're working with, our local region, is great. She's been really helpful, helped us out through the whole process, taking things to Washington DC. But it took, it took about two months for the FRA in Washington DC to respond to the question of, do we resubmit a new application, or can we append, amend the existing one? Good thing for us, it came back, is we can amend it. So instead of a, you know, a nine-to-12 month process, they said that should take somewhere around six to nine months. It takes a couple of months off. Another question that had come up was, when we did the initial application, the first one, the FRA came back with some different risk calculation numbers, but it was still under the threshold, and so we didn't question those because we had our quiet zone. But now that we need to resubmit a new application, or an update in this case, we needed to make sure that we were doing the calculations correctly. And again, our local representative was great. She really helped us out. But it took almost three months for them to give us a direction to determine if we were doing our calculations correctly. And while they didn't tell us what calculations they disagreed with with our first application, they did tell us our methodology was correct. So I'll take that as we're doing it right. Next steps, we are going to complete the quiet zone amendment to the Federal Railroad Administration. That should be done shortly. As with the UP, we'll continue working with the railroad on the crossing modifications and try and reach the consensus before we go to the Utilities and Transportation Commission with the cross modification petitions. And similar schedule, the duration's very similar, and the, you know, the potential establishments of the quiet zones are very similar. The, again, some of the things, you know, we, we've got enough experience with the contract documents and the construction time period to be comfortable with those schedules. But when we're working with the railroads and the FRA, it's, we believe these are close, best guess, at this point. Finally, I'd like to end with a 2022 legislative session update as it relates to the quiet zone. And you've probably already heard this, so it's not going to be a big surprise, but it's, it's a great thing for us. This is something that Brianna Murray had reported on the April 5th Operations and Public Safety Committee, that the city of Kent received an additional $3 million for the quiet zones in the city. This funding was included in the 2022 supplemental operating budget, thanks to the support and hard work from our state legislature. So our state legislators and the state legislature. So great news. That's going to be a big help, and that's hopefully enough money to complete it. So I'm really excited about that. Another thing about this is it is in the supplemental operating budget, not part of the transportation budget. So we don't have to wait until next year to find out when we get the money. It should be available soon. So with that, that's all I have. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Moving along. That's great.
It is, yes, it's a process, and we still have the excitement, just a little frustrated with some of the timelines. But yeah.
We got the momentum going. That's good. Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Rob, on this quiet zones, I think there are some nearby cities that have that. What, is it Puyallup, or?
There are about 30 in the state last time I looked.
I'm sorry, 30?
There are about 30 established quiet zones in 13 municipalities, 13, 14.
All right. What would be the closest one? Puyallup then, or something, or?
I don't think Puyallup has one because they called me about six months ago to ask me how we were doing ours.
Tacoma? Oh, Tacoma?
Tacoma has some, some older ones, I think, on the waterfronts. Seattle has some in their downtown area.
Okay. Thank you.
You have a question for Rob? Okay. Let's hope Councilmember Higgins is watching this, and he's probably jumping up in joy. So, all right. Thank you, really appreciate it. Can we have our last presentation for tonight? It is an advanced key performance, and it doesn't like Michael walking up here, so.
Kathleen McConnell.
Hi, Kathleen.
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Mayor, President's voice, and council members. Michael is joining us via Zoom. He is at a conference, a GARE conference in Oregon.
Evening.
Hello.
Hello.
So a little bit about myself. I am a senior financial analyst in the Budget Division, and I also work with Michael on the performance measures. I started working on performance measures, I think, about 2018, and they've come a long way since I've been working with Michael. He's really brought us up quite a bit. So go ahead, Michael.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Mage, Government Performance Coordinator. And today, both Kathleen and I are going to give you an update on the Advanced Kent Performance Dashboard. And I do have some sides. Kim, is it okay if I run it on my side? Request control. Oh, you got him. Excellent. So council, last time we provided this update to you in the winter, we were really on the cusp of building out this dashboard. And now, we're pleased to announce that, as of last month, this dashboard has been launched. And so part of this update is to bring you up to speed with where we're at currently, and then also to give you a bit of a tour of the dashboard itself. So next slide, if you would, Kim. And Kathleen's going to remind us what our definition of performance measures are.
So a lot of people really don't know what performance measures are, and it really can be difficult to wrap your head around it. It took Michael and I quite a while, really, to distinguish, like, what are performance metrics versus, or performance indicators versus the performance measures. So performance measures, here's the definition from MRSC, the Municipal Research and Services Center of Washington. But they, they are, they include, excuse me, inputs, which are resources used, outputs, which are program activities, efficiency measures, which is the ratio of inputs to outputs, and outcomes, the actual results of programs and services. Next slide, please. So the strategic framework model that we used here was adapted from Stockwellby in 2014, Managing Organizational Performance Training, and also displayed in a PowerPoint presentation at Scottsdale, Arizona. Now, as you know, the, we have the posters that you see there on the right of the screen throughout the city in numerous locations. And our challenge was largely connecting the dots from the council goals that we see here to the department operational measures because the goals were at such a high level. We quickly learned that there was a missing element in order to connect the specific performance measures without measuring everything under the sun. We found that the missing middle were the objectives, so we began identifying citywide objectives. The citywide objectives are the bridge we needed to connect the council goals and performance measures for organizational alignment, as you will see in the next slide. Next slide, please. So here you can see the bridge connecting the citywide objectives to the council goals and departmental operations. Many other municipal dashboards have themes and strategic goals, but regardless of their labels, they look very similar to what we have here. Oops, next slide, I'm sorry. I forget that would, it takes some loading. So we asked, how will we achieve the council goals? Where are we at as a city? Where do we want to go? How will we know if we're headed in the right direction? So next slide. And these are our council, excuse me, our citywide objectives that we worked with ELT and Derek and the mayor to establish and to connect those goals. There are many, excuse me, there are more than one-to-one relationships. It's kind of like a spider web. Many of these strategic objectives connect to several of the council goals. But now we're able to tie our metrics and targets to the council goals strategically through our objectives, thereby measuring our organizational progress toward the council goals, and using data-informed decisions or a data-informed approach to increase transparency, identify opportunities for development, and ultimately improve public services. You can delve into an explanation of each one of these citywide objectives on the dashboard itself. Next slide, please. So this, as I said, I began working with performance measures back in 2018, and it began with this consultant's report. The consultants met with various departments and groups throughout the city. They made some great recommendations. Two particular points we gained from the consultant's report were, number one, to final, to focus on the vital few. We didn't want to measure everything under the sun. And what do the council goals really mean? That was the, in determining what they meant to us, that was the way we were going to be able to connect the dots. So next, Michael will share our strategy deployment.
Thank you, Kathleen. So council, in this next slide, I think, as you may have seen before, we were really trying to take these questions and put them into various project phases. And really, over the course of the past year and a half, we've cleared through all of these four major phases and actually launched the performance dashboard. And so now we move really into a maintenance phase, which I call Phase Five, the phase that we're currently in now, really getting this dashboard out in front of people, also reviewing it with our various stakeholders, both internal and externally, collecting that feedback, and then iterating upon improving this dashboard moving forward. So I think the next click will show some checkmarks coming up on this slide, which is very satisfying for us to see over the past year and a half of work. So thanks for that, Kim, and I'll take the next slide. And so the dashboard, as mentioned, was launched last month. And, Kim, what I'd love to be able to do is actually present the dashboard, which is available to all on that advance.kentwa.gov link. And thank you for that, Kim. And this is, yeah, it'll come up here in just a minute. I want to give you a tour of seeing how all of this comes together, and should load up there. Always during a demonstration. Thanks, Kim. So while that's coming up, I'll just kind of walk you through some of the main points. But the dashboard itself, it operates similarly to a webpage. It houses data that is stored in an online repository. We ended up choosing a GIS platform for the resources that we already have in place at the city to bring this dashboard together. There were a few different platforms that we were looking at, but this one really checked a lot of the boxes. There it is. Thank you so much, Kim. So this is the homepage for the dashboard, and we'll just scroll through this page. There are all the citywide objectives. And if we keep going down, we also have a little feedback form that, that green button above would take you for. We're really trying to encourage folks to provide feedback. We're collecting it from everyone. Obviously, we want to get it from residents. We're also trying to get it in front of other performance analysts, some, the professionals to give us some feedback on this form, so we can always work towards improvement. We also provided a number of FAQs that it came up for us internally, but also want to display those out to the public as well because actually putting together a product like this creates a lot of expectations. So we want to be able to frame those expectations and for folks to understand how we will actually work to make these updates in the future. So just some common FAQs there. And what we'll do is just scroll back up, and I'll take you through a few of these different citywide objectives. And we can begin with the DEI one at the far left. Kim, thank you so much. And on each homepage, we have an explanation as to why the top-level objective matters. So speaking to all of the metrics that were selected by ELT for display in each of these objective areas. So really trying to explain our organizing principle behind all of the data that we're showing. And if we scroll down, I'll give just a quick verbal example. So this is a data that is populated, as I mentioned, from a GIS repository. We collect the data from different departments, and then we update it on a regular basis. Most of our metrics are scheduled currently to be updated on an annual basis with a few exceptions for monthly, quarterly updates. If you look at this first chart, on the far-left-hand side, Kim, there's a little widget that pulls out a description. There's a little arrow. If you click that arrow, yep, that will actually give a fuller readout of what this particular dataset means. And if you scroll all the way to the bottom of that window, Kim, we'll see of that little tiny why this matters. Yeah, there's, there's actually, if you go back to where you were, you'll see that there is, and pull out that little flyout menu that you just had. Yep, and then that's where it is. So under, at the bottom of that little flyout menu, we have the what success looks like. So this is how departments are currently describing what their performance targets look like. And it really does depend on the data that we have, where we're at with particular initiatives, and also just in terms of, like, how hard of a target can we identify at this point. This is an area that we know we want to continue to standardize, but for now, this is a good explanation as to where we're headed with a lot of this data. For this page in particular, we're looking at both self-reported data for staff, and then also self-reported diversity data for candidates as well. And in previous conversations, I believe I took you through all the, the metrics that we were considering, and now you can actually see this live data. And so on this particular one, I'll just point out some notable features in all of these data, just so that you're familiar with it. And naturally, some questions come up with some of this that we want to be able to answer. But very often, we have IT systems consideration. As you know, we're currently bringing in new technology to the city, and whenever we have and whenever we have basically a legacy system that is being replaced by a new system, we might be drawing data from two different places. So this is a good example of that for this particular dataset on self-reported staff diversity. So what we see here is basically up until the last year, most of our data was derived from JDE. That's the system in which we were pulling this demographic data. And then the last year, we moved over to Workday. So that's really where we start to see some evolution even in our datasets of where we're having to kind of keep these data separate, because sometimes we get more capabilities out of the new systems or are just able to present the data in different ways than we were able to before. A couple of things just to point out. And, Kim, if you float over like the gender pie chart there, there's a little thing in the top-right corner that will actually, yep, zoom in to each of these little pie chart areas. So just to point out that the functionality behind all of this, you can zoom in and zoom out, and there are some limited interactivity that you can do in any of these areas. But let me go ahead and take you through the rest of this page. So we have the self-reported candidate diversity. We also identified early on the need for race and equity staff training. And this is one of those particular sort of targets that we got really close to hitting. So our goal was 95%. I think we got to 93-point-something. It's really small on my screen right here. But this is sort of how we can visualize our data and how we can kind of keep moving in the right direction as far as some of the goals that we've set. So we got really close to that one as well. So that's currently what we have in, currently for our metrics for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we'll go ahead and quickly look at the public safety space. I'll take you really quick through all of these pages, and then you're welcome to ask me any questions as we wrap up. So this is our public safety page. We're combining metrics primarily from PD, of course. And this first metric is on 911 response time, really looking at achieving a target, I believe it's under five minutes there, that they're looking to get their emergency and priority-one calls under that target time. And then they also have a number of other priority-level calls that are explained in the description for that particular metric. Yep, that's where you would find it. And underneath that, we also wanted to include the DUI court, and sort of they're looking at DUI recidivism after participants complete their program. This is for their first grant cycle of DUI court. So currently, they're hitting their target, their absolute target of zero, zero people recidivizing that participate in this program. So we'll be looking hopefully to include a new pie chart for their next level of, their next grant cycle. And then moving down, we have the crisis team responses to mental health calls, kind of looking at what those inputs are for that particular team. We also have, and this is historically, in the budget book, we published ratio of officers by population. And now we actually have PD setting a very clear target for where they would like to see that number in terms of ratio of officers per 1,000. And then we also do have a comparison of calls for service with other Valleycom agencies. So really looking at a comparison, so this is kind of doing some benchmarking between the number of calls Kent receives as an input against some of our other peer Valleycom agencies. So really kind of looking at some comparison there as well. So on the community engagement page, just to be brief with all of this, since there are a few different areas, we have a lot of metrics, both for online and also in-person services. We really start by looking at our social media main platform growth. So those are the City of Kent platforms, really looking at our reach and our audience for each of those main channels of communication. And we can see just over the course of the last two years, those have really exploded. Not surprisingly, probably largely in part due to the fact that most people are looking online for a way to communicate throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. As we scroll down, we see, not surprisingly, how this has impacted in-person services. Well, starting here, we have parks acreage, and then a clear target there as far as park acreage per 1,000 residents. And then we also have parks capital spending per year. Different explanations for all of those. So we try to explain any outliers that might, or something that may appear as an outlier to the public. Sometimes that's just a need of explaining how our funding cycles work or how things are allocated. So a lot of explanation in there. We also have our residents served by human services programs, both the numbers that we contract through, for, through our human services division, and then also tracking the overall reach from others who fund local community partners as well. So both human service programs, residents served, I should say, and then human service programs funded. So those kind of go hand-in-hand, those two metrics there. And then if we continue to scroll down, I think the last one that we'll see is really looking at sort of the impact, the very real impact that staff have felt in terms of in-person services, and particularly with parks and recreation programs. So we're kind of seeing the trends of pandemic, especially in the last two years, captured in our datasets. And wherever possible, we try to provide a little bit of a note, a little bit of a caveat there to remind people that the last two years have been very strange and are often reflected in our data. And so in many cases, we're hoping to see our data return to pre-pandemic levels moving forward, something to watch for as we move forward. So we'll move to the next objective, and that's going to be under the more dropdown, and we'll go into that next one, economic vitality and livability. And so this is where we're really looking at things like permit processing time, both for residential permits and for commercial permits. In both cases, we're trying to do a couple different things on these bar graphs, but trying to show that there is a review time, and then there is part of it that's applicant time, in terms of applicants needing to make revisions to their permits in order to hit a particular permit processing time. This is one of those areas that we would like to see return to pre-pandemic levels. And so that's how the target lines were selected for both of these metrics, really looking to get that processing time down. And so that's the residential and the commercial permits. And so if we scroll down, we also have, so this is rental housing, health, and safety inspections. This one's done a little bit different in terms of the review cycle. It's on a sector-by-sector basis, and it doesn't always flow one year to the next. They do different sectors by year, and then are really looking at a certain amount of units inspected per property. So again, this is one, if you look into the last year, that was affected by COVID-19 in terms of just getting access to people's units in a time of pandemic was difficult. So again, acknowledging that some of our numbers have been affected by the pandemic. And so that is, let's move to the next objective. And we're getting into dependable infrastructure, which is where we house a lot of our public works metrics, really looking at sidewalks repaired by section. This is something, and just as an idea, just to give you a sense of how we think about things and are always looking for improvement and also explanation of some of the data that we have. Because GIS is primarily used as a mapping platform, one of the things that we have in the sidewalk repaired by section is, you know, location data that we could use to light up a corresponding map to show where these sidewalk repairs have occurred in 3D space. So that is something that we're looking at doing. You get all sorts of ideas when you start actually seeing the datasets, but of course, would need a little extra work on that to make that happen. But these are the sorts of things that occur to us. Potholes repaired, this is an important one that it carries over from the budget book as well. And we also are able to get more detailed data out of our new cityworks system. So on the left-hand side, the bar graph is from the older Hanson system. And then the right-hand chart is now getting into the monthly view of our citywork system. And not only are we able to actually see the number of potholes repaired, we're also able to see the number of potholes reported by residents. And one of the things that we like to see as being proactive is that the potholes repaired exceed the number of potholes in many cases that the public is aware of. And so that is helpful to show that we're on the right track and actually able to address these potholes in a timely manner. And so that was good data to see. And then, speaking of potholes and pavement condition, we have two different metrics that we're looking at here in terms of overall pavement condition at the city. We realize, and these are particularly hard metrics to establish targets for, because you're always going to be chasing after them. You'll never achieve 100% pavement condition index. It's always going to be a game that you're going to be playing catch-up on. So we have two different datasets. One that's kind of looking and projecting out sort of the annual overall network pavement condition index. And then there is an actual physical inventory inspection done, I believe every two years, that actually scans the pavement to find specific areas that need to be improved. So got a couple metrics there. And also, in terms of recycling, this is, in terms of recycling and curbside collection, this is not a service that the city provides directly. It's something that's contracted out to Republic Services, but we wanted to be able to show sort of a little bit of that data. The things that we have more direct control over as a city is really looking at the recycling events, sort of the tons of material collected at each of these recycling events. And so this is where we kind of get into conversations with departmental subject matter experts in terms of what can we actually control and what's a realistic target to set for any one of these metrics that we know we have the ability to influence. And then finally, you can't talk infrastructure without talking IT infrastructure. And this is really looking at sort of where all of the IT projects are at in terms of are they on target for the initial budget, schedule, and scope that they were established for? And so basically, at the council-approved level, making sure that we're not slipping too far behind some of these projects. So kind of getting a sense of if we're in range for those three criteria that they're looking at. And so I think we just have one more objective to take you through, and it's on government accountability. And so this is where we're capturing a few different things. So public records requests are the PRRs that are completed, and kind of really looking and seeing that the demand for PRRs has really gone up over the past three years. And also acknowledging that the turnaround time, the staff have been able to continually deliver upon that typical turnaround time, even though the demand has gone up. So that's a good thing to see. We also have some metrics in here that are ones that come to us from outside agencies. In this case, the State Auditor's Office Audit Findings. Not necessarily something that we can visualize in a very compelling way, but it is an important metric, and we always want to see sort of our target for these things is to have zero findings. And we also, for those that are currently marked as NA, we don't yet have the data from the agency to populate this table. So sometimes we're waiting for the data to actually upload onto our dashboard. Bond ratings are also a measure of the city's credit worthiness, so we want to always have a kind of an eyeball to that. Lean training enrollments, of course, as you know, as a lean Six Sigma Black Belt, I am also providing trainings and minting city employees in yellow and green belt trainings. And so this is my own measure of success in terms of lean enrollments. And then finally, we have our Lifeline utility customers, basically looking at how many of our customers who qualify are actually signed up for Lifeline. And we always want to be able to share that information out with folks, so if they do qualify, they can get some utility assistance. So there's one final page under the more, Kim, which I would love to show, and that's the Goals and Strategies page. And I'll just share that with some of this early feedback that we're receiving from folks, this page is very helpful for people to understand how we connect the dots. This type of work can get very technical and wonky. And so sometimes we want to be able to explain exactly what was the methodology. And so this is kind of our explainer page. We have a number of related links, and then also some project photographs of how all of this came together on this page. But we're finding that it is helpful to direct people to this page and maybe even highlight it at a clearer level so that people can understand how this dashboard work came together. So that's the dashboard, and I think we just have a few other slides that we'll take you through and be happy to answer any questions as well. And the next slide is... I'm just waiting to see it myself, sorry. Oh, so I want to point out a few things in this, or this chart here, and really to show some of the other groups that we're working with at the city to take this dashboard to the next level. One of the things that we're aware of as sort of the city works to use data more effectively is the need for greater partnership specifically in our business intelligence team, what's called the BIT. We also have a number of department data champions, which were identified in this project to help provide the data. Basically, Kathleen and I can go and work with departments, but we are not the experts in their area of work. Very often, if they're showing us a spreadsheet of data, we need them to look over our shoulder and tell us exactly what we're looking at, because staff at the line level and at the process level understand sort of what's an exception, what isn't, way better than any of us would. And so that's where we're looking for more collaborative opportunities, either through the department data champions or also through the business intelligence team, which recently got rebooted and also had a lot of departmental representatives on it as well. And then, of course, because we built this dashboard using GIS tools, that enterprise GIS team has been a very valuable support system for us. We would not have known how to put all this together without their help. So just want to acknowledge those critical partnerships. And to take you quickly, this is all our selection criteria. So this is kind of how we went through the selection criteria. I think I've shared this before, but I just wanted to remind us all that this is kind of the checklist that we go through when we're looking at a new metric. And then on the next one, we also have our reporting process. And this is really where we get into our sort of quarterly cadence with ELT. We have a meeting later this month, which will be our second meeting of the year in terms of looking at this dashboard, reviewing it for improvement, really asking what's working, what isn't working. Again, this dashboard should evolve with our needs. And so that is our quarterly touchpoint to really ask those questions. Where can we do better on this dashboard? Not only to move the numbers, but also like, are there things about the dashboard itself that could be improved as well? So that's how we'll be reporting that. And Kathleen?
So the one thing we know is that change is inevitable. Just as we have evolved from the budget book performance measures to this performance dashboard, the dashboard will continue to evolve as well. It's not just a straight line. It's a cycle. It's a process that we go through. And we will strive for continual improvement. And as you can see, there are a number of questions that we ask along the way, and we will continue to ask as we cycle back through. We've also already started a list of improvements and ongoing phases to continue moving us forward. So you'll see in the next slide, a sample of our list that we've begun. There are 10 items here so far, and I know that that's going to be growing. Because Michael and I have other duties that we perform, this has been the best method for he and I to be able to track where we're at, what still needs to be done, who contacted us, you know, where did this information come from? us, you know, where did this information come from? So that feedback that you saw on one of the screens where people can push that or click on that green button and give feedback, that is where we're getting some of our information as well as other agencies that Michael's in contact with. So now, Michael will speak to the voice of the customer.
Sure, and I know we're probably just getting to time here, but one last mention is we've really looked at all of our inputs, our outputs, tried to think about our outcomes. And this is also where we need to really start thinking about how we're capturing that voice of the customer, and that's lean language. What we prefer to say is, of course, the voice of our Kent residents, of our community members. And so this is really where we're starting to get a lot more interest in perhaps a resident survey. You may know that in our last resident surveys were in 2016 and 2018, and we kind of took a step back, especially due to COVID with the resident survey. But now that we have a better system for managing our own performance, it's really kind of a question as to how are we tying this back to the services that we provide and the feedback that we should be receiving from residents? And so this is, I mention this because it's a part of a much larger conversation, but it is sort of an area that is commonly connected with these sort of performance dashboards. So this is something that we're kind of looking into, and in some of our conversations with ELT, the importance of having surveys done on a continual basis so that we can always be looking at how our data progresses from, you know, whether it's annually or year, every couple of years will be important. But that's, that's a big conversation, and that's something that we're just kind of looking into now, and looking at the best way of doing that is still forthcoming. Okay, and with that, that's your quick demo. Any questions?
Hey, thanks a lot, boy. I seen this coming full circle, really great, great progress. Do, when I look at the performance score, do we have like an overall score where they kind of rolled up to a score for this city or they all separate measurement within each target?
Great question, and currently they are all separate. So this is a piece that we're looking at perhaps standardizing moving forward, but currently departments are able to set their own performance targets, and that is sort of how we're creating this initial version of the dashboard. And one of the questions moving forward as we work with ELT is really where can we standard across, create a standard across the entire city for those targets?
I got two other questions. One is, how often do you refresh the data? And then secondly, if I'm a citizen of Kent, where can I go? Is this easy for me to go find and take a look at?
So let me answer that question first. It's located at advance.kentwa.gov, and that's the friendly URL that will push them to the dashboard. And so that's where anyone can access it currently. The, to your, to your second question in terms of how often we'll be updating this. So ELT, we're looking at quarterly meetings to review the dashboard itself. At that time, we will probably be making some improvements to various things, including how the dashboard looks or what, what pieces of information are on the dashboard. But as far as the metrics are concerned, which are probably the more important item, most of these metrics are annual metrics. And so there is some natural way that the data wants to be, the natural cadence that the data wants to be published at. And so that is really, we're looking at our biggest update is going to be happening on an annual basis. There are a few exceptions to that that may come in at a quarterly basis or a monthly basis, but I would say the lion's share of metrics are going to come in annually.
And I'm sorry, so I mean, some of this stuff, I mean, you know, if I look at it today and then I look at it nine months down the row, I mean, it's kind of old, right? I mean, there's in a way you can make some of this stuff dynamic where it can refresh on a regular basis.
So that is another good point and something that we're wanting to do. Currently, it's a manual update process because this is a new dashboard. But with that BIT team I mentioned earlier, that's our IT sort of team, that we're looking at doing more automation between some of these new systems that we have. So it would be basically a hands-free operation. It would be some report that just pulls automatically and refreshes the dashboard on some reoccurring basis. We are currently looking to pilot some automation and some improvements, but that really takes a little bit more expertise in terms of getting those integrations built by the IT professionals that know how to do those things. So, but that is definitely a direction we want to move in ahead of us, yes.
Good job. Really like what I'm seeing and really, really pretty slick. So any question, council members? Are we good? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it, and we adjourn until seven o'clock. Thanks.
Thank you.